Welcome to the August 21st, 2014 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Fleming lead us in the invocation. If you would please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Let us pray. The most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you give us, Father. We just thank you for all those who serve in the city of Troy, for our police and for our fire lord, and all those that work on a daily basis to make this a better place to live, Father. Just lift them up to you. Ask your protection, amen, Father. Father, we just pray that tonight that you will guide and direct our thoughts and process in this meeting, kept it to be an orderly meeting, Father, and we'll just give you all the honor and the glory. In these things you pray, your precious and holy name.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
I received a call from Councilman Teetz that he would not be able to make the study session or the city council meeting tonight, so I will move that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Teetz at the special city council meeting and the regular city council meeting of August 11th, 2014, due to being out of the county. Sir. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Campbell that we excuse the absence of Councilman Teetz as indicated. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We are pleased this evening to have two. C1 is the Troy Roads Rock Update with an introduction of, by Bill Houdery, the deputy city engineer. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm kind of pinch hitting for Mr. Van Dett. He is in California visiting his first granddaughter, so I get the pleasure of giving you a little construction update on our Troy Roads Rock Program, the County Road Concrete Replacement Program. First, I want to start off and just give you a little status on the construction. The contractor, Delicio, has finished up work on Long Lake as well as John R., Mainline John R., because there's work still going on in the intersection of John R. and Big Beaver, so there are still barrels on John R. They poured the outside lanes on Thursday, opened them up this morning, and now they're working on the inside lanes. So they had to knock off a little early today because of the incoming rain, which looks to be a wise choice. They didn't want to rip out any more pavement that they couldn't get poured before the rain came. Moving on to Big Beaver, they are working, they started last Monday, the 4th, traveling eastbound. They are working on the two outside lanes while maintaining traffic on the inside lane. We did meet with them to look at ways we could mitigate traffic, and the big thing that we came up with was to keep them off of westbound, so they're only working the eastbound side right now. They're going to work the two inside lan- or the two outside lanes. When that's done, then they'll come back, do the inside and the median lane. When Rochester to Dequinder is complete, they'll flip over, do the westbound side same fashion, they'll do the outside two, then move to the inside. All that work westbound or eastbound is anticipated to be complete by the end of August, westbound by the end of September. At that time, then they'll move on to Dequinder, and we'll have more information on that once they get a little closer. And one other note about Dequinder, there's an item on the agenda tonight for a cost agreement with the county. The county identified some very poor pavement on northbound Dequinders, north and south of Maple. The county is going to front the money to do that. Delicio will do the work for us, or for the county, and they will, they're doing the construction management for us, and so they'll also do that for that work. But it is something that needs to be done, but it is not in Troy, so it was something that the county came up with the money, and it's, the agreement's on the agenda tonight. The county has two projects as part of the Troy Roads Rock Program, the first being Big Beaver, which is going to be a pretty intense project. It's a fairly compressed schedule for the amount of work they're doing, there's about $3 million in slab work to be done on Big Beaver. The first part of that, they're looking at starting August the 18th at the Adams-Big Beaver intersection. The intersection itself will be totally reconstructed. So in order to do that, they're going to close Adams Road to north and south traffic. There'll be no traffic that can go through north or south on Adams, there'll be no turns from Big Beaver to Adams. So one benefit to that is Big Beaver traffic will be maintained in one lane and the signal will flash, so traffic on east-west Big Beaver will be able to move through the intersection pretty well, we expect, once you get into the one lane of traffic. The intersection closures, about four weeks is what they're looking at, so it is going to run past Labor Day or thereabouts, so it probably will impact school. That is something they're working on coordinating. This is, this project does have NHPP money, so it is federal money that's in that job. Once the intersection is complete, or once they get to a point where they can start moving, they're going to start moving eastbound. They're going to do the same type of thing, we're doing two lanes, maintain one lane of traffic while traffic is fully maintained on the westbound side until they get down by City Hall and turn direction. When they start coming back westbound, they're probably going to be working both sides of the road at the same time due to the volume of concrete that they have to replace in trying to get this, that project done before the holiday shopping season. November 15th is a pretty significant date, so they're trying to complete Big Beaver before that because they do have some work in Madison Heights and Birmingham as part of that same contract that also needs to be done. The Crooks Project, we are still waiting to see what the contractor's schedule is, but we anticipate that one also starting within the next two weeks. That one is not as big a project, it's about a million dollars. That is all risk reserve or the priority roads investment program. It's all 100% state money, and it's being run by the county, Waddles to Square Lake. So if you want a real quick overview, I mean, Delicio has completed the work on Long Lake, they've completed the work on John R., Big Beaver East starting up, it started up on the 4th, Big Beaver West starting up next Monday on the 18th, and Crooks probably within the next two weeks is what we're expecting. And then I wanted to touch on a couple of other projects because we were very lucky. We put $5 million into this program, got a $10.5 million return. On top of that, we also kind of walked into some other money. This is from the first round of the risk reserve, so an additional $750,000 to replace the culvert that carries the lane drain under Livernoy Road just south of Town Center. Senator Papa George and Representative Howellak worked with us, worked with the county to get our projects into the program, push them as priority projects, and we did get funding for this one. This one, the preconstruction meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have better information then, but what we know right now is they are looking at, starting in August, the contract was set up to coordinate the work with Troy Day, Troy Family Days, so that the closure cannot occur because there's a nine-day closure anticipated. The closure cannot happen during Troy Days, and what it looks like is probably after Troy Family Days, just due to the fact they have to have shop drawings and all the materials on site because it's going to be a Friday evening closure through the following Monday is kind of what it's set up right now. Dan's excavating was the little bidder on this, so they're more than capable of getting it done. They're doing the big job out in Livonia and 96, so we've got a lot of confidence that they can get this done, and it's looking to be complete the end of October. The other projects, the Long Lake Project was mentioned previously, and there is the MDOT, we finally got the MDOT caution or cost agreement that's on the agenda tonight as well. Million and a half through the priority, priority roads investment program. It's 100% state money, no local match, it's a prepay. Agreement gets executed by us, executed by the state, we submit a form, they electronically send us a million and a half, we build the project. We've got a bid opening scheduled for the 13th of August, so we got things, once we got notice of this, we went straight to design. We're going to come back on the 25th with a bid award, start construction probably right after Labor Day. Obviously, we've got some coordination issue, coordination issues with the high school, but this is milling overlay, so it's not slab work, so it is something that they can mill off pavement, maintain traffic on it, put it right back on, temporary stripe it, get traffic on it while they're doing other types of things, and hopefully we can work with them to do some of the work on, maybe do some of the heavy paving on the weekend or something like that to try and work, to try and minimize the impact of the high school. $400,000, we don't know a lot about that yet, other than it was a project that was awarded funding, it's an overlay on I-75. They've done a lot of kind of the joint repairs, taken out the little speed bumps that people like to call them on the joints along 75. This, at $400,000, it appears to just be a real simple, thin overlay, so it's something that we'll get more information once MDOT lets us know. We still are looking at completing up work by mid-November. Page views to date, this was as of last Monday, a little over 8,000, I think the last time you saw this, it was 5,000 something, so the word is getting out. DPW has graciously lent us Bob Schultz for Big Beaver. He is going out door-to-door, knocking on businesses' doors with, we've got press release that he's handing out, he's coming back if there's questions, concerns, so we're trying to hit them with the website information, with anything that we can to try and make things as palatable as possible because we know it is, it's going to get pretty dicey here in about another month when all these projects start up and we have closures and school traffic is really going to be the big wild card right now. Because right now, you're in August, a lot lower traffic volumes, and it's, can get pretty hairy sometimes, but when school traffic starts, it can get real intense. And then Kurt's going to come up and talk, because this is what we like to call halftime, and I was just running a few, few numbers. If you take the $10.5 million Troy Roads Rock Program, you throw on the $750,000 in money we got for the lane drain, the million and a half we got for the Long Lake overlay, and the $400,000 for I-75, our $5 million investment now is turned into about a little over $13 million investment for major roads in Troy, which is phenomenal. You throw on, what Kurt's going to talk about, almost $7 million on our locals and industrials, you're talking a $20 million road program, which is unheard of for a local. It really, really, really will make a difference in how people move around Troy. So my, I put the picture of snow, Kurt accused me of.
If it does that, it's not my fault. We just, we just deal with it. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
As Bill indicated, this is, this was kind of like the halftime show, and this is the preview to the second half. Most of the numbers you see up there are pretty consistent, what we invest into our major industrial and local roads. Except for the local roads, if you recall, when we started the Troy Roads Rock Program, the contract was awarded to our, our, the DPW contractor, Delicio, so what we decided to do is we decided to postpone about a two, just over $2 million local road project from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So the $5.5 million does include some leftover funds from last fiscal year. But the, the major road projects, which will, will be investing approximately $100,000, include the Waddles and Coolidge intersection that was constructed, last constructed in 2005, that was a white topping project, so what that means is that was concrete actually put over asphalt. It was milled down because of a, because of a speed hump issue. That has deteriorated over the last nine years, so we plan on doing an asphalt overlay to the top of that. The base is good, engineering will actually be letting that. And then also miscellaneous slab replacement that we didn't catch with the Troy Roads Rock Program, this is for our major roads, our major road, concrete roads, which pretty much cover Rochester Road and Coolidge are our concrete, city of Troy, major roads. Industrial roads is a $1.3 million investment. Currently, we are working on New King Court, Tower Drive, and Wilshire, and then later this fall, we'll be working on Corporate, Town Center, and Kurt's Boulevard. Town Center will be coordinated again with the Livernoy Lane closures for the Lane Drain, Troy Family Days, along with the Amber Apartments development on the corner of Livernoy. We're, I talked to Mr. Amber, and we're coordinating because they have to bring in utilities, they're going to do additional curb cuts. We certainly don't want to put in a new road and have them come in and tear it up to put in utilities in their curb cuts, so we're coordinating with them. Our local roads, again, $5.5 million, that's spread out through the city, and this is a, this is a picture of what we have done from 2014 through what we're projecting to do in, by June of 2015. There's a lot of local roads in there, I wasn't going to go through all of them, however, the ones that we do intend to work on this fall are the ones we postponed last spring, which include the areas down at Dequinder and Big Beaver, what we call Section 25, that was postponed, Amberwood, which is Rochester and South Boulevard area, and then Section 8, which is Northfield Parkway and Coolidge. Those were the ones that were postponed. We fully anticipate on completing those this fall. And then any of the remaining funds will be completed by June 30th, 2015.
Sounds good. Any questions for staff? Looks good. Good job. Bill, I see that you are communicating with the Somerset Collection through this project.
Yeah, yeah, I have contacted John Mizak, General Manager, and I did send him a new email today because the, we had staff, or agenda prepped this morning, so I wasn't able to go to the Big Beaver preconstruction. One of the engineers from our office went, gave me an update, and I forwarded that update on to Mr. Mizak, and I've also given him direct contact with the road commission's project engineer. She is ready to assist as well, so I've given them phone numbers, emails, mine and Steve's as well. Steve's off till the 20th, I believe. So I said in the interim, let us know, and I've asked the county to work with them, if not directly through me, because we realize that any work in and around Somerset is going to impact, I was there tonight, the place is packed, and it always is, so it is a gem that we need to make sure we pay a lot of attention to, try and get people in and out of there.
Great. Thanks. Questions?
Councilwoman Hoderek?
Just a quick comment. I noticed in the agenda packet the letter of appreciation from a family that had a wedding in town, and they were going to be navigating around our Troy Roads Rock, and they probably would have thought they didn't rock, except for it sounds like you guys did a nice job of helping to guide and direct them around.
Actually, actually, Mr. Van Dett did that one personally, so I'm not going to take credit for that one because he, he took ownership of that one, and he realized it was a very important date for, for them, and so he kind of handheld them and, and worked with them to make sure it was, it was done right and done well.
I appreciate, appreciate the extra effort, and I know, you know, we see letters that come through from people where they're seeking advice and whatnot, and we know that on top of the engineering and the matching of funds, that the handholding of the public, our customers, is also going on, and I guess I just want to personally acknowledge out loud that that is happening and express my appreciation.
One of the unique things we've seen with this work, although very intrusive, we are getting calls, not a ton of calls and emails, but we're getting enough, but what's different is people have concerns, but they're saying thank you. They're saying thank you for the work, we understand why it's being done, but can you look at this? So it's a much different tone with this type of project because the roads were in such poor condition, and so many communities are not doing anything, they're just passing the buck. Federal government just passed the new highway bill and just kicked the can down the road again. So it is something that I think all of you should be proud of for stepping up to, to make this money available because I think it will make a huge difference, and we hear from the business community, they come in and they say, we can't believe what you're doing to your roads. It's phenomenal. So it's, it's, it's a testament to the city of Troy and our ability to do this type of work and, and to still continue to pull money in from the outside, which is what we had hoped, that money begets money, that we, we get money and we know how to use it in the best fashion, we know how to, to get it, we know how to get projects out, we know how to get them built, we know how to get them built right, and we know how to get more money. So we're going to continue to, to keep looking for it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next is C2, the Friends of the Troy Public Library Update with an introduction by Kathy Russ, the library director, and I see you brought along Sue Martin, the president of the Friends. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have, I've brought along the fabulous Sue Martin, who is president of the fabulous Friends of the Troy Library, and she's going to give you an update on all that they're doing for the library these days.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy to be here. Also a bit of a cheerleader with good things to say tonight, like we've just heard about our roads and people who appreciate that. And it is with great privilege that I come here as the president of the Friends and on their behalf to talk to you. Over 50 years ago, a small group of dedicated Troy residents drafted a plan to create a library in the city where they saw none. A commission was formed, people were called to action, and the Friends of the Troy Public Library were incorporated to move that project forward. Their very first activity was to hold a book drive, an endeavor that yielded about 8,500 books, and one quarter of those were put aside to start what would become the most envied library collection in southeast Michigan. The remaining volumes were used for our very first used book sale. That netted over $500, seed money, if you will, for what became the library as we know it today. So began the legacy of the Friends. As an all-volunteer, nonprofit, member-supported organization, we continue to promote and support the library with a slightly larger group of still very dedicated people. We've stuck with the cornerstone of the operations, holding the used book sales, and we take donations on a daily basis, and every day that the library is open, those books are carted down into the basement by a legion of dedicated volunteers, some who've been with us for decades. Those books are then sorted, organized, priced, shelved, and sold every weekend at the library in the basement bookshop. Some of the books are set aside and they are donated, and they are being given to several charitable groups. They provide reading materials to shelters, hospitals, schools, churches, and the military. This is a very important part of our outreach, and we've partnered with many of these groups for years and years. We also run the lobby gift shop. This has a great collection of affordable gifts, jewelry, toys, and more books, and this is an integral part of our fundraising as well. It's also a nice service for residents, staff of the city, who can pop in and out and shop whenever they're using the library, or even just to come in for them. The result of all this effort is that we're able to donate our profits right back into the library. For the fiscal year 2014, 2015, the Friends are able to fund $60,626 of programming, technology, and materials for the benefit of the entire library community. This includes the reading programs, enrichment programming and workshops, a new set of iPads for public use, materials to make the library more efficient to everyone, and even some cool ad spots that will run on the screens of the MJR Theater right here in Troy. None of this would be possible without all of the Friends, and one of the cornerstones of the whole fundraising that we do are the summer reading programs. In fact, this past summer, we had 1,671 children registered, 203 teens, 148 adults. The finale of that program brought 988 patrons to the library this past Friday for a day-long celebration of reading. As Kathy said to me earlier today, who else can say that they made nearly 1,000 people happy all in one day? That's what the Troy Public Library does, and that's why the Friends love to support it. And again, as I've said, all of this is done by volunteers at no cost to the city or to the library. In fact, our volunteers put in over 8,000 collective hours last calendar year. According to the independent sector, a leadership network for nonprofits, corporations, and foundations, that would translate to what would have been nearly $200,000 in paid annual wages. Our work for the community is never done, and we can really have never too many Friends, so I encourage every one of you up there on the table, anyone in the audience watching from home, to join with us in support of the library. I can think of few better ways to preserve the work of everyone who's gone before us while we're ensuring a prosperous future for the library well into the future. You can come into the library, check out our website at friends tpl.org, visit us on Facebook or on Twitter. I thank you very much for the opportunity to tell you about what the Friends have done this year.
Thank you. Thank you. And please pass a lot of thanks to all the Friends that volunteer for us. Thank you. Okay, there are no public here, oh, there, there are no carryover items, but we do have public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is E1, which is to establish, the establishment of an industrial development district, IDD, for Mahendra North American Technical Center, Inc. at 1055 West Square Lake in Troy, and I see Nino Licari is here to tell us about that. Before you do, I want to open the public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Good evening, Nino.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I hope I didn't keep you, a couple of animals got off the ark there, I was running around in the lot trying to, trying to get them back on there. As the mayor said, we have two public hearings tonight, they're both concerning tax abatement. As you're familiar, the process is that you create an industrial development district before you can give a tax abatement, and since that's the way the state law works, you're going to end up with the bulk of the information on the very first public hearing because you need to have that information to decide whether to create the district because if you're not going to create the district, there's not a whole lot of reason to even go forward because you can't give a tax abatement without a district. As you're aware, and the mayor mentioned, Mahendra has moved into 1055 West Square Lake, the old Hilex building, that building's been vacant for seven or eight years, as I recall. Quite a long time for a property like that. Mahendra is a, a large, heavy industry company from India. They're kind of like the Ford Motor Company over there, it's a family-held industry, and they're trying to break into the American automotive market. They do other business here, obviously, but they like to break into the American automotive market. They have a, another facility where they'll do testing and building and whatnot, but this will be their technical center. And this is not the largest tax abatement we've ever brought before you, as a matter of fact, it's the second smallest tax abatement. It's also the shortest number of years, they only qualify for five years based on the investment, the lease of the building, but the kicker here is what's driving this all is 82 new jobs in Troy, and that's a lot of jobs for the amount of investment that they're putting into this building. We've had companies come in here and spend 11, 12 million dollars and not give us 82 jobs, so that's, and they're all high-tech jobs, they're well-paying jobs. So what it amounts to is a $17,000 savings for them over the five years. The city will realize almost $5,700. In other words, your cost to you is $5,700, but you're also gaining $5,700 that you didn't get before because the building's been vacant for so long. So it's a $5,700 net gain, not, again, not a lot of money, so not a lot of hurt to the city to get this company to stay here in Troy with the 82 jobs that they've got. And there was one other thing I wanted to say here. No, there's not. Oh, I should mention the investment, I'm sure you're aware of it, it's about $887,000 for the company itself. They are in the building. The way the process works is once they send me a letter of intent, they can start working on all their project while the rest of this process goes forward. So they're in the building, they're occupying the building. We're thrilled to have them here. Mr. Fred Laws is here from the company, he's the CFO. If you have any questions for him, I'm sure he can help you out with them. And I think that's pretty much it. I would like to just state too, and I'm sure the mayor and you are aware, we put a memo on your council table for the second public hearing, the IFEC. My apologies, it was totally my error, I had nine-year abatement in one section and five years in the other. It is five years all the way through, that's what they qualify for, and I believe that new resol- resolution fixes that problem for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Questions for Nino this evening? Thank you, Nino. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for a resolution. Mayor? Mayor Protem Henderson?
I'd like to move E1 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Fleming, that we approve E1, the establishment of an industrial development district. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. E2 is a public hearing for granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC for Mahendra North American Technical Center, Inc., 1055 West Square Lake. Does anyone need to speak to the administration regarding this? We will deal with the yellow copy that was placed on our desk this evening if somebody wants to move that resolution. Councilman Campbell?
I'll move the resolution, E2 forward as printed with the five years change on it. Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell, supported by Mayor Protem Henderson, that we approve E2, the yellow sheet copy that was presented this evening at the table. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, had the opportunity to tour the building a few weeks ago. It's a beautiful building, and welcome to Troy. We're, we're happy to have you. Thank you. I don't see that anyone has signed up this evening for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents or businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1, board and committee appointments, there are no mayoral appointments this evening or city council appointments. I2 is the board and committee nominations, and there are no mayoral nominations this evening. I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Protem Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to forward two names for the traffic committee. There are two resignations in the traffic committee, and the first, first name I'd like to, to move is Ali Apahedian for a term expiring 1/31/2016, and the second name, David Easterbrook, for a term expiring January 31st, 2016.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we nominate the names that were presented by Council, Mayor Protem Henderson, due to resignations. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. There is no closed session request this evening. I4 is a contract ratification for the Troy Command Officers Association, TCOA, for 2014 to 2019. Introduction by Jeanette Manning, the Human Resources Director. Good evening, Jeanette.
Hello, good evening. I am so pleased to be here again to let you know that we've reached another tentative agreement in collective bargaining. This agreement with the Troy Command Officers Association was the result of IBB, or interest-based bargaining. Our process was swift and effective, thanks to the efforts of both negotiation teams. As evidence, we moved through the process from group IBB training to union ratification in less than two months, and we reached an agreement that is similar to the agreements recently ratified by other units. City management definitely supports and recommends ratification of this agreement.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Jeanette? Thanks for all your hard work. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I4, the contract ratification of Troy Command Officers Association as printed.
Support.
Lots of support there. I'll go with, moved by Councilman Pennington and then supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I4, the contract ratification for TCOA. Is there discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you to the administration. Next is the consent agenda. Is anyone at the table wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Seeing none, somebody like to move the resolution. Mayor Protem Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, is memorandums and future council agenda items. There is an announcement for a public hearing, August 25th, 2014, for reprogramming, community development block grant, CDBG, program year 2013 funds. No one has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals. Next is council comments. I could be first to just wish Cindy Stewart the best. I know she's probably watching us this evening. She had a, was in for surgery today, she's doing very well. We give her our best, and speedy recovery. We need you back here, Cindy. Thumbs up to you. Anyone else? Anyone have any discussion on the reports this evening that are on the agenda? No? No one has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. There are no study session items after, we did have one this evening before, no closed session. Thank you for coming, we are adjourned.